Well, let's start tonight's meeting. So call to order Wakefield, Town of Wakefield Planning Board Meeting for April 28th, 2020. And we have an agenda, so I'm going to share my screen. And I'll share the agenda. Let's see, you can all see the agenda. Town of Wakefield Planning Board, consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law. And you could read this, you could see that we we have to work with this provision until anything changes, until it changes. Tonight's agenda, minutes of the previous meeting. The previous meeting is actually on the website. I'll share that so you can see where that is. If you go to the town website and you go to the boards and committees and go to Planning Board, you'll come to our page. And on the right, it has the agendas, which you can download and anything else in there. And you can see the board members. And up here on the left, the meeting videos. So this is the meeting video. If you click on that, it will pull up last meetings video. So if anybody needs to do that, you can. I'm going to change my share. And if I just switch to another one. Can you all see, Matt, can you see the agenda? Thumbs up? Or is it still the website?
It's the website, sorry.
Okay, all right. So I need to stop the share and I'll bring that agenda back up. I'd like to entertain a motion to review the minutes of the previous meetings at another later date in time.
I'll make a motion that we postpone. Actually, we're still waiting for the, are we still waiting for the March 24th meeting minutes anyways? Right?
We are.
Okay. Yeah, so I'll make a motion that we postpone our meeting minutes to our next meeting.
I'll second it. All in favor? Thank you.
And Bill, I don't know how we're going to handle the last Zoom meeting, how we can, you know, approve that. So I don't know what our, what the protocol is. Do we need to have written? And then we had talked about this last time. We're supposed to have written meeting minutes, but those aren't getting done. So I don't know if we need some direction on how to handle that from someone else.
I spoke to our clerk and she doesn't have the equipment to attend the meetings to keep notes. So I guess, I can't remember if it was my responsibility from last meeting to ask Town Council, Mr. Mullin. If so, I apologize and I will send him an email to ask. Okay. Thanks, Matt. The items on tonight's list, we're going to look at four, one, two, three, four, five, public hearings. One is a property at Lovis Ave Extension, which is going to be continued. Three, four, five, and six have to do with bylaw zoning, I'm sorry, zoning map changes. And these meetings, this is the third meeting for three of them and the second meeting for one of them. So with the attendance tonight, it would be great to do, as requested, the zoning map change for number five. You can see, I'm highlighting it, hopefully that comes out okay. Zoning map change, three Chestnut Street, five to five A Chestnut Street, 345 Main Street, Avon, from General Residence District to Business District. I'm going to stop that share and I am going to, actually, it was the same one, I believe. Let me make sure I get the correct one. Here we go. Matt, can you see that? Okay?
Yep.
Zoning article number 24. So just a quick recap, this is the third meeting that we've been reviewing this. And we've had some great presentations from Mr. Attorney McGrail and understanding with representation from the Savings Bank on what this means. And I'm just going to read this out, that way everybody can hear it if you can't see it. Zoning article number 24, to see if the town will vote to amend the Wakefield zoning map dated May 2nd, 2016 by changing the zoning district designation of so much of the properties at 5-5A Chestnut Street Wakefield. Let me, sorry, I gotta move this over a little bit so I can see it all. Accessor map, accessories map number 12-271-87D Chestnut Street, map number 12-272-0087 for Avon Street, map number 12-275-076 and 345 Main Street, map number 12-308-62 plus. And portions of Avon and Chestnut Street as are currently within the General Residence District to the Business District as shown on a map below. And amending the zoning map such that the revised map bears a new date, May 5th, 2020, and amending the zoning text 190-70, I'm sorry, 190-7 zoning map such that the text is changed with the revised map date. The first sentence of 190-7.a. is replaced with the following. A, except as set forth below, the above zoning districts are shown on the map entitled Wakefield Zoning Map dated June 8th, 2020, or see what the town will do about it. Mr. Revis, is it May 5th or May, or June? Do we have to have?
Mr. Chairman, I will correct all the dates when we correct date of town meeting.
And the correct date of town meeting?
Right now, it's June the 8th.
June 8th.
So we're using May 5th, it should say June 8th.
Thank you.
And there's several other typos that need to be fixed. I'll need to review this with Mr. McGrail in great detail.
Right, I know we reviewed it the last meeting. I just wanted it to come up for the sake of understanding it all.
Very well.
Thanks. So with, with all this, we were concerned of a few things and the public was also concerned with comments too. So just a quick review, the line that you see right down the center here is parallel with Main Street. This area you see here is the library, and this is also the library. And they have Avon Street, and we have Savings Bank. And Attorney McGrail, what's the name of this building here?
Where are you?
Sorry, right in here? I don't know if you can see my cursor.
That's a Savings Bank branch, that's the name.
That's the branch. And there's a little corner building here.
That's a Hartson Building.
Hartson Building.
Yep.
And you can see this little sliver that splits the building, the corner of the building. And then across Chestnut Street, and that's where it stops. We understand the reason of the streets, the way it's set up here, why this one on Avon Street goes to the middle and this one's Chestnut Street. It's just the way the zoning maps laid out. As you can see, this dark line that comes down and goes up Chestnut Street, that's just how the zoning map is worked. So that's not something that was made up, that's been there. There was questions from the public and from the board about why split? Why are, why are these other buildings split? And why hasn't the library, Board of Trustees, been notified to understand more about what's going on in other property owners? So that's where we left off on the discussion. Attorney McGrail set up a meeting, and I believe that meeting happened last Thursday. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So that's a quick recap. And Attorney McGrail, if you want to fill in anything I missed and to pick it up to where the meeting, how the meeting went.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail, I represent the Savings Bank. Bob DeBeller is on, he's no photograph. He's the president of the Savings Bank. And Rachel Cullery is also, I believe, on, and she's vice president of the bank. And they're both here participating. So the way this was left, I think, you know, I think, not to speak for the board, but I think everybody understands and is fairly satisfied or very satisfied with what we're proposing on the zoning change. Kind of the hole that we needed to fill was where there's a town property involved. The board, the Planning Board members wanted some input from the library trustees who are charged with running and working the library and operating it on a daily basis. So what I did is I reached out to Catherine McDonald. Catherine is the director of the library. She's on this Zoom meeting now, you can probably see her. And she was kind enough and gracious enough to set up a meeting with the full Board of Library Trustees last week. We had that meeting last Thursday night. Kevin Scanlon is the chair of the library trustees, and he's on the Zoom meeting also. We had, we spent quite a bit of time, went over this whole zoning change proposal in detail. We went over some history of the library property and when and how it took title. We talked about the various operations of the library. And then we also talked about how we thought that this zoning change might benefit the library in its operations. It was a very participatory meeting. Paul Revis, the town planner, was participated and gave his input on behalf of the town and also gave some interesting input on why we did not include the post office property and how that could have become problematic for the town, which Paul might want to touch on tonight if he decides to do so, if you wanted to. But I think at the end of the day, this will benefit the library. The Board of Trustees voted to support this zoning change. And Kevin and Catherine are here to speak on behalf of the library trustees. So I think you might want to hear from them more than me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you for that quick recap. If Catherine or Kevin, if you'd like to speak about your feelings and your thoughts about this zoning change, please do.
Good evening, Kevin Scanlon, Chair of the Board of Trustees of the library. As Mr. McGrail said, we had a meeting last Thursday of the board. It was, as Mr. McGrail said, a very robust and lively discussion of all the trustees. And I'd say we did about, it was about a good hour of discussion and going over the history and with Mr. Revis' also input in how certain aspects of the zoning kind of came about throughout the town. So after the presentation, we took a vote and the library trustees was unanimous that we would support the proposed change at town meeting. I think everyone felt it was in the library's best interest to do it. And it just made a lot of sense to do it moving forward. So we fully support the proposal by the, by the Savings Bank.
Thank you, thank you, Kevin. Any other comments? Okay, it's good. I'd like to open up to the board to see if there's any discussion from the board or questions to the trustees or to the Savings Bank or to Attorney McGrail.
I don't really have any comment on, you know, in, you know, with that. One of my big things is I just kind of wish that this had happened before this had gone forward. I'm not really in favor of including parcels that people have, you know, find out about after the fact. So, you know, I'm glad that we were able to have a meeting on that and you're fine with that. I just wish again that it's all done before it goes forward. I know there's one other parcel that I don't know if the owner realizes that they're being rezoned, but I'd like to have in the future, everyone who's, whose parcels are going to be zoned, or at least a signatory to the petition, have it done.
Understood. Bill, do you have any comments?
No, I don't. Matt's put them all together right there.
Right. It's pretty clear to understand what's happening. Mr. Revis, do you have any comments?
There we go. I'm sorry, I was finding the right button to click to unmute. I sent an email earlier today to Mr. Mullin, Tom Mullin, our town attorney. And I asked him about five Chestnut Street. This became a point of discussion with the library on Thursday night. The parcel next to the Hartshorn Insurance Building is currently a group home. It's part of the rezoning petition here that's been filed. And I don't believe that owner is aware of the rezoning change. And I raised the concern with Mr. Mullin and reviewed the state statute about rezoning and the procedure for notice with Mr. Mullin. And he agrees, I believe, that we did everything properly. We are not obligated to give notice to everyone that's potentially affected by a zoning change. And he gave the example, when you adopt a zoning bylaw, you don't know all the properties in town that may be affected. So you have no state obligation or state statute obligation to, or to give everyone in town that you might think is a potentially affected notice of that change. Just publicizing, publicizing the notice in the paper is the proper procedure. It's in the state law, we follow that procedure. The town planner, the planning board can't make up their own rules about how to turn out notices to butters or to, you know, property owners in town. So we followed the state laws on this. I asked Mr. Mullins to this question, rise at town meeting, if he'd be prepared to address it as well. And I said he would. I think it's an awkward thing to explain. It was awkward for me to explain it to the library board. And I don't know that they felt it was fair be to rezone a property and the owner not know it's being rezoned. But it is indeed what's allowed and it's legal. So I wanted to let you know that in the future, Mr. Lowry, I don't think that we can block petitions to rezone. So if someone was concerned that a piece of property was going to be rezoned in the town for business that was in their neighborhood, they could bring it forward, get the 10 signatures, do a citizen participation to downzone properties in their neighborhood so that they can protect their neighborhood. That's one of the reasons you have the rules that go with, in our plans and subdivision plans. If you file a preliminary plan and then proceed to do a definitive plan within, what, seven months? You're able to lock in the zoning. You get a zoning freeze so that people cannot change the zoning on your land, so you can't do the subdivision. And sometimes communities would do that. You'd have a zoning for single family lots, say a 10,000 square foot lot requirement with 100 feet of frontage. Some of the neighbors living at neighborhood now, that may have lesser dimensions on their property, might do a petition and change the zoning so that it required a half acre of land and 200 feet of frontage. And it's possible to do that. So that's one of the reasons people do a preliminary plan and then a definitive plan, followed it so that the zoning freezes stays in place. I think we've done the procedure properly for five Chestnut. And I hope that it's not raised as an awkward question for the planning board or anyone at town meeting, but we should be prepared to respond to that.
Thank you, Paul. Just, I got a couple messages from Sheri. Hopefully I can claim as host, she's looking into it, just wanted to give a quick update. I know as a planning board, and I want to make sure everybody understands too, we don't approve these zoning changes. We either recommend or don't recommend favorable action at town meeting. And we can be asked questions at town meeting. But otherwise, it's really up to the public or those who attend town meeting to make the decision by two-thirds vote to approve or not approve the zoning change.
And I just want to make a point. I'm nowhere saying that we need to get approval by people. I'm saying at a minimum, this is a small town. This is a direct the butter to the bank. I don't see why they, you know, couldn't have approached the owner beforehand. I understand what the law says. I'm just saying, it would have been nice if the, if the butter knew about this beforehand, just like if the library knew about this beforehand. That's all I'm saying. I'm not saying we can block it. I'm not saying it's not legal or anything. I'm just saying, in my opinion, it would have been nice to notify your butter that you're changing their zone. That's all.
Thank you, Matt, good point.
Yeah, and just, you know, in the future, that's, you know, we've had this before where other parcels just included and people don't know about it. It's a small town, we know who lives there, we know who the owner is. Just give them a heads up, that's all. It, the optics of this don't appear too, too well to me at least. So that's all I'm saying.
I agree with that, Mr. Lowry. That's the reason I was very insistent that Mr. McGrail talked about the library. Because the, this proposed change, you know, arrived on my desk as is, fait accompli. And I was very concerned about the library not being aware of the proposal and the library trustees being at town meeting, being very astute people, asking a lot of questions, complicating town meeting night so that it was many hours on this subject. I felt it was advantageous to the bank to, to do this change. I think it's advantageous to the library to do the change. So I'm very pleased to recommend it to the library, but I did not know about it in advance.
If I could just add to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, go ahead.
So I respect everything that everyone's saying. You know, there is a process, you know, in, you know, if I went down, I could go down the list. I've been practicing law for 30 years. The number of my clients that have never been notified of anything when they, when people have tried to change the zoning on their property. And there's certainly no malice on behalf of the bank in this in any instance. This is not a downzone. So I think if you were taking somebody's property and changing it to reduce the uses that could occur on their property, that's, you know, that's, that's a little bit different. But everybody's, everybody's use of everybody's property that's involved in this zoning change is an upzone. It's not going to prohibit the use of anything that's happened on anyone's property. It's only going to expand the possibilities.
Understood. And I think the, the main understanding here is that if it, if you're, if the people who are involved, the landowners, the butters, whoever it might be, are approached, I think you'll do better at town meeting. I think that's the, the understanding is that you'd be better prepared for town meeting instead of somebody walking up there irate, saying, hey, this is my property and I never knew about this. What's going on? And that would just really delay things and could cause it to not pass at town meeting.
Well, you know, at the end of the day, that's actually happened.
Yeah, I remember, actually.
And, you know, it happened on the, when we did the assisted living overlay district. At that point, somebody whose property was included in that overlay district got up at town meeting, hadn't been noticed because it not required to and said, hey, you know, I really don't want my property included in this. And everybody listened, and you know what? We did an amendment and we took it out. So, you know, that can happen. That's, that's not the end of the world. But, you know, I had a discussion with Tom Mullin today. And at the end of the day, it's the town who decides, as Paul said, what the zoning is going to be. It's not the property owners. And I've had plenty of zoning changes forced on my clients over the years by various groups and citizens in the town. And, you know, you know, unfortunately, that's just the way the process works. The other thing that Tom said is, he said, you got to be careful just taking it on your own to give notice and not complying with the statute. Because now, now you're creating a precedent. You give somebody notice, well, why didn't you give the other guy next to him notice? You know, because that's going to affect him that he's next to a business lot. So when do you stop? And then somebody says, I didn't get notice and now the town does this, so I should have got notice. You know, you follow the law. If you're a property owner and you want to be notified of a zoning change under state law, you go to the town clerk's office and you file a notice that says if this ever zoning change that affects my property, I want notice. And you can do that. And, you know, and not many people do do it. But, you know, I think the proper discussion on this, quite honestly, is with our state legislators. Amend the statute, require notice to property owners affected. Simple as that.
Okay. Thanks, Attorney McGrail. Any other comments from the board?
Oh yeah, I just wanted to say one thing. I think, I think what Matt was saying, and I mean to put words in your mouth, Matt, it's, it's nice to be neighborly and tell people.
Well, I can, I can tell you this, okay?
Hold on, Brian, let him finish.
It's nice to be neighborly and you'd like to know what's going on around you. And, and I think that's just a, you know, a neighborly thing to do. It might not be the law, but it's a neighborly thing to do.
Understand, yeah. And I will say this, that the Savings Bank is very neighborly, as they always are. And they've had discussions with that property owner about what they want to do with that, with their property and improve the downtown area as a whole. And maybe they have not been received too well. Let's leave it at that.
Right, I'm not saying they're not neighborly, they did what they're supposed to do.
No, but I'm just saying, they have talked with that neighbor about their proposal for their property. They have. And, and, and with all due respect, I don't think they were too well received.
Okay.
And some people, you know.
So it's our option to try to rezone that property. That's, that's legal under the bylaw. And we think it's for the good of the town, quite honestly, for the good of the bank, for the good of the town as a whole, and that's what we're proposing.
Okay. Thank you, Bill.
I'm not saying they're bad people. I'm not saying that.
No, I know.
Mr. Revis, do you have any comments before we open it up to the public?
I wondered if you had any questions about my soliloquy there, explaining the zoning and definitive plans, preliminary plans, zoning freezes, how the state law sets up zoning changes.
Do you want to review that or you're just?
No, I just wondered if you had any questions because you were looking at an email from Sheri.
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
We, from Sheri, it was a text message. And she's fine, she looked at the meeting, it's being recorded. So we're not going to try to change anything, even though we, nobody can claim as host. So it might be in the software or somebody among us has already claimed the host and has the special code, which we don't know of. So that, I'm not sure. But Sheri confirmed that it is being recorded, which to me is the most important part, that it's, it will be posted to the town website and people will be able to look at this. Okay.
I'm all set, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thanks. Any comments from the public? And you can raise your hand, I'm looking at the participants list. And if you have any comments, please feel free to share. And once you do get called on, please state your name and the, your address. We have a hand up from Joanne. Joanne, if you want to speak, go ahead and state your name and address.
My name is Joanne Schooler and my address is 51A Chestnut Street. I just wanted to get some clarification on the perspective of the library trustees on the change and what aspect of it they find advantageous to them.
Mr. Chairman, should I be taking questions from, I'm happy to answer, it's not my meeting. But I'm happy to, I'm happy to, so if I can provide an answer.
I did hear your question.
Do you want me to repeat the question?
I want to make, I, it cut out right at the end of your question.
Yeah, my question.
To respond.
Yeah, I was just curious, the perspective of the, I was curious on the perspective of the trustees and what they find advantageous. I was curious on the perspective of the trustees and what they find advantageous about the change in the zoning to the library.
So I'm I'm happy to answer that, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I don't know if it's really through the chair to me. It's not my it's not my meeting. It's the it's the planning board's meeting. So but I'm I'm happy to provide an answer if you want.
Yes, please do.
Okay. So I think that the way the, as we understood it from Attorney McGrail, if once it's zoned to be business, there could be at some point in the future, the ability to make the parcel or have some type of, I think he said, like a cafe or some sort being operated within the library that couldn't be done now. Or if there's some future use in the future that we can't not now predict that may be advantage to the town being zoned business as opposed to being split as it is right now. Those are the two two advantages that we saw. And just having uniformity of 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 the zoning in front of the front of the building as well as well as the back of the building.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Kevin. Any other comments from the public? Okay, so at this time with the board, I think I just want to see if there's any other hands raised. I don't see any. So it's been a while since we've done this with the zoning change. And the way it worked before, and Mr. Revis, please help me out if I'm doing this incorrectly. The town hearing. Let me go ahead and go back to the agenda. Mr. Chairman. So the the public hearing is open for the zoning map change, and we would close it at this time.
Correct. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing portion of this of this item.
Thank you, Matt. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Matt. So the board will discuss and all the commentary we've heard. See, this is really weird now. Now I have both things open. Let me see if I can share this. Can you all see the agenda again? Just a thumbs up? Agenda? Okay, good. It was flickering back and forth. Okay. My connection keeps jumping up and down. Had to restart on modem twice today, so I hope that's not the problem again. Okay, so this public hearing for the zoning map change for three Chestnut Street, five dash five H S S Street, three forty four Main Street, four Avon Street, from general residence district to business district is now closed. The board will review and at town meeting will either recommend favorable action or not recommend favorable action.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that the board favorably recommend zoning map change for three Chestnut Street, five to five A Chestnut Street and three forty five Main Street, along with four Avon Street from general residence zone to business district.
Second now.
Thank you. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I'm just recording this, meaning writing it down, not just physically recording it. Action. Thank you. Thank you, trustees of the library. Thank you, Attorney McGrail. And thank you, public, for all your feedback through these three meetings. Next item, Attorney McGrail, number two, public hearing, Lobus Ave. It says continued. Is there anything that you want to add or anything we need to know to prepare us for the next meeting?
No, well, I can tell you that we were before the concept, we're back before the Conservation Commission. Last Thursday, they started the Zoom meetings. They did get a consult asked or suggested that the Conservation Commission request some additional buffer be provided. And our engineers in the process of trying to work that through. So I think that we will be prepared to be on your agenda for your next meeting on that to at least provide you, because you need to know where this additional buffer is going to be proposed in in what the Conservation Commission is talking about as far as what they've requested to make sure that it's acceptable to your board.
Okay. Thanks for the update. Please get any, if if there's something that you can send to Mr. Revis that can help us understand better, so we're better prepared for the meeting, that would be great.
Yeah, I think what we'll do is probably get you a copy of their consultant's report and then some changes that are going to be proposed by Mr. Omen.
Right. And of course, we'll have the engineer report once that's completed. Did you did you get a timeline on the engineer report?
Well, they've already done it. They did it.
Oh, they did?
Yeah. When you say engineer report, you mean town engineer?
Sorry, town engineer's report.
Oh, no, I don't know about that. I can tell you that if you remember, the Conservation Commission hired a peer review consultant.
Yes.
And that report is in.
Oh, that's the report that you meant from the engineer, not not a town comments from the town engineer.
No, no, I'm sure the town engineer is going to have to look at it in conjunction with the with the, you know, what's being done with the with the conservation peer review. So that hasn't happened yet, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for explaining. Okay. And you're fine on the time down the bottom extended to June 30th.
I actually, Paul, I extended this. You're probably going to modify that, Paul, because I think I sent you an extension until September 30th that the board requested.
Yes, I do recall that email. That needs to be revised. Thank you, sir.
I clocked that extension in. That's all done.
Yeah.
Okay. And I really hope when the September 30th, we're by then, we're back in town hall, but we'll see.
I get a feeling these meetings are going to go through the summer.
Well, I'm hoping once we do get back to town hall, we can also have a Zoom meeting so those who can't attend it in person can still attend. I know that was a discussion we had before this all happened with some one of the town councilors. So we can review that.
Yeah.
Hopefully. All right. Thank you. Next item on tonight's agenda. We have North Ave. So public hearing, zoning map change, three parcels of land.
A point of order, if I may. So if I could respectfully request that the savings bank is who's still here, we just did their first change and then their their item number six. That's the second part of what they.
Oh, you're right. The zoning text change. Okay.
So if
We'll jump to number six. Thank you. Public hearing, zoning text change. Section one ninety dash thirty one. Yep. Add new paragraphs, L and M. Sorry for the quicks. Here we go. Let's see. It's this one here, right? Number twenty five. Let me make sure. Yep. I have two, though. Here's L and M. And then here's L and M with suggested amendments. So before I read this, did the suggested amendments, Attorney McGrail, were those accepted by you?
Yes, well, I mean, those were, if I may, Mr. Chair, those were a work in progress with input from the general public, some of who attended the first public hearing on this, and I think some comments on the second. And then they also
Right.
Because that was when we talked about the height that we really didn't want to provide for opportunities for heights in excess of what's allowed in the business district currently. And then the town planner raised some concerns as to how this could impact other districts. So the other red lines deal with suggested changes by the town planner. And we thought these were all good changes. I think we talked a little bit about these at the last meeting. And I think they make sense and they're in the spirit of what the public input has been with this proposed bylaw change.
Right. Okay. All right. So I guess my question is, which one am I reading then?
Oh, I would, is Paul there?
Paul is here.
Yes, I would start with Article twenty five, suggested amendment.
Yeah.
Led by Planning Board's public hearing, April 28th.
Okay. So near Article twenty five, suggested amendment, amendment amended for Planning Board's public hearing, April 28th, 2020, to see if the town will vote to amend the Wakefield zoning bylaws by amending section one ninety dash three general regulations to add the following paragraphs after one ninety dash three thirty one L. L, except for height, the Board of Appeals may allow reductions and or increases to the requirements of Table two, Table of Dimensional Regulations of the zoning bylaw Town of Wakefield for professional and or business offices and or financial institutions by special permit when such uses are allowed in the business district as listed in one ninety dash twenty three, Table of Use Regulations. Any such reductions and or increases shall be supported by evidence of lack of suitable land or design considerations or other similar factors. The Board of Appeals must also find that the granting of said special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood of or the town. Further amend section one ninety dash thirty one, General Regulations of the Zoning Bylaw by adding the following paragraph at the end thereof as one ninety dash thirty one M. M, the Board of Appeals may allow reductions and or alterations to the requirements of one ninety dash thirty one G of the zoning bylaw Town of Wakefield for professional and or business offices and or financial institutions by special permit when such uses are allowed in the business district as listed in one ninety dash twenty three, Table or Use Regulations. Any such reductions and or alterations shall be supported by evidence of lack of suitable land or design considerations or other similar factors. The Board of Appeals must also find that the granting of said special permit will not adversely affect the health, safety, convenience, character, or welfare of the neighborhood or the town. Or to see what the town will do about it. I need some water.
Mr. Chairman, I have two corrections here.
Okay.
In the italicized words, the one line that's above paragraph L, we are actually amending section one ninety dash thirty one, general bylaws to add the following paragraph after section one ninety thirty one K, not L. So I will make those two corrections if this is a amendment that you wish to recommend to town meeting.
Thank you. Okay. Now, we have discussed this and we know from the comments from the town from the first meeting from the public. It was really about a height issue. We're concerned. The concern was that the height could extend up. I think that if I look back in my notes, I remember sixty feet was something that was the concern was.
Allowed.
That's allowed. And there was something to, I'm just looking in my notes.
So that, Mr. Chairman, this paragraph would maintain that sixty foot height for limitation.
Right.
But not above sixty feet.
Not above. So except for height. There's one comment.
It meaning that it can go to sixty feet, but it cannot. You can't get an exception to go above sixty feet.
Nothing in the special permit will allow it to go above the the sixty feet.
Correct.
In the zoning bylaw for the business district.
This special permit not allow be granted for something above sixty feet.
Right. And I'm just looking at the zoning book here just to if anybody does have any questions on it, I have it open to the page. Planning Board, any comments?
I don't have any comments.
Bill? All right. Mr. Revis, any comments besides the change in the L to a K?
No additional comments.
All right. Attorney McGrail, would you like to add anything to this?
I know. I think, you know, as I said at the first meeting, I think, you know, the reasons for the public hearing, I think the that there there are benefit and they work. I think the the issue on height was a valid concern that somebody brought up and in and it wasn't the intent, but now it's taken care of. And then I think, as usual, the issues that Paul bring up are valid. And I think those are taken care of now, too. So
Okay. Thank you.
The process works.
Yeah. Any comments from the public? Okay. Now I see any hands up. So at this time, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Revis, do we need a motion or can we just close it?
I think you need a motion to close the public hearing.
Okay, want to if somebody could like to entertain a motion.
And you might need a roll call to do that.
All right, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing portion of
Zoning Article twenty five.
Yep.
Yep.
Not second now.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right, have verbal response from all three members. In favor to close. Again, thanks for the comments from the public throughout this. I know not everybody's here tonight. That was here at the first meeting or the second meeting. But those comments have really helped shape this. And any comments we do receive from the public, it helps us tremendously. So we'd like to keep that going as much as possible. As a board, do we want to recommend favorable action? To this suggested amendment?
I'll make a motion that we favorably recommend the zoning check text change for section one ninety dash thirty one to add paragraphs L and M as revised through the planning board hearing.
No second now motion.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Bill. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So verbal and actually physical in that. I saw hands on that one, too. That's good. In favor. So the planning board recommends favorable action. So zoning article number twenty five, the suggested amendment to L and M. Thanks. Thanks for the help on all this. Sorry, I just got another note from Sherry, a message. Going to enter the meeting. Okay. Todd may be entering our town IT specialist might be entering the meeting to turn the host over to me, but we'll see if that happens. Hopefully, it doesn't stop the meeting. All right. And I jump back to the agenda for tonight. Let's see. It's getting easier to switch back and forth, that's for sure. Attorney McGrail, does it matter if we do Salem Street first or North Ave first?
I think Salem Street might be better because it's it's the third hearing on that.
Okay. So it will continue tonight's public hearing, zoning map change, one oh two Salem Street to general residence district. So I will jump to we also have, and thank you, Mr. Revis. Thank you, Paul, so much for pulling this all together. Definitely helps. Let me jump to Salem, all right, there it is. Zoning Article Number 23, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the Town of Wakefield by amending the Wakefield zoning map dated May 2, 2016, by changing the zoning district designation of 102 Salem Street Wakefield Accessors Map Number 29-136-012, currently within the single residence district and the industrial district to general residence as shown on the map below. And amending zoning text 190-7 zoning map such that the revised zoning map bears a new date. The first sentence of 190-7.A is replaced with the following. A, except as set forth below, the above zoning districts are shown on the map entitled Wakefield Zoning Map dated June 8, 2020. Or see what the town will do about it. So this is the third time we've looked at this project and we have heard from the owner, we've heard from Attorney McGrath about New Salem Street and the industrial zone that's here southwest of the property, the residential zone that's north, east and north, and southeast of this. So the surrounding area on the zoning in the residential district is single and the general residence is a different zone. So the, let me do this to help too, I pulled up a map. Let me stop this share. And share. Here we go, this looks more familiar, okay. So New Salem Street, the industrial zone here and the parking. The owner now has parking here with a residence and the parking is being rented to local businesses, from my understanding. And that could be corrected in a minute if it's not true. There's defense and there's residence here above this, there's a residential neighborhood. And if we were to go to a street view. I think I jumped to Preston. Go back. All right. Let me back to here. There we go. The residential neighborhoods. Am I going the right direction? Nope. Sorry about that. Here we go. So here's the property.
We've got a blurry screen, Mr. Chair, I do anyways.
He's frozen for some reason. Bill, I think we lost Bill Spalding.
Yeah.
You're up, Matt.
All right. Let's, let's see if Bill comes back at some point, hey, you're back.
I'm back. So that might have been Todd joining in, what was the last thing you saw happen?
Blurry screen.
Did it just freeze?
Yeah.
Yeah, just froze.
All right, let me just check, I don't think we lost anybody. I don't know if that was on my end or if it was the Zoom meeting being reset. Paul Reviss is there. I see Matt, Bill, good, Brian, we have the board. Joanne, okay, good. I don't think we lost anybody. And it looks like it's still recording, so that's good too. All right. I believe this is where we left off.
There it is.
The property. So I would look to the north northeast and the residential property and fence to the southeast residence and there's New Salem Street looking down towards the industrial. The industrial being this whole property adjacent to. And I want to get to the, okay, there's, there's a good one where you can see the whole thing. So Attorney McGrath, I wanted to open up to you to recap anything that you, you feel necessary before we discuss as a board and open to the public.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I mean, this is our third hearing. I think we've kind of stated our positions on this and how we feel will be beneficial to the neighborhood and the town and it will create a natural buffer coming from the industrial district and going into it from the single residence district. If I could, can I try to share the screen on a couple of things that I wanted to present to the board?
Yes, I'm going to stop, share, go ahead, you're welcome to share.
Thank you. Let me see here. So, the first is, this is a letter, can you, can you see this?
It's not shared yet.
Hold on, let me see.
Didn't see your screen yet.
Hang on. How about that?
Yes.
Can you see it now?
Yes.
Great, so you can, I'll read this, this is a letter from the neighbors at 102 New Salem Street in the general vicinity. They were about to the Planning Board referencing zoning change to general residence 102 New Salem Street. 102 New Salem Street is currently a split zone lot almost equally between industrial and single family. It is our understanding that there's a proposal before the town to have the property rezoned to general residents to allow construction of a two-family home on the property. This is actually a downgrading of the existing zoning and will help preserve and increase property values and quality of life in the neighborhood for the following reason. One, the property will be used for residential, not industrial. Two, no more commercial use or commercial traffic associated with the property. Three, no trucks, construction equipment, no noise. Four, the property will provide a nice buffer from the industrial district to the single family district. Once complete, there will be less impervious surface on the site, improving drainage, more landscaping with a residential use. Residential use means no unsightly commercial vehicles, storage, or debris. We respectfully encourage the Planning Board to support and recommend approval of the zoning change. So a lot of these few people aren't in the area that signed this, but we have a number of people on Appleton Road, which is a little side street neighborhood, which is right in the vicinity of this that deals with a lot of that traffic on New Salem Street. And then also some folks on Baldwin, which is also part of that general area. And then Salem Street. And there's some other people that signed this or, you know, to be quite honest, signed really directly impacted by our residents in the town that support it. So there is some support within the general neighborhood for this as a benefit. I also, I think, Mr. Lowry gave me a little bit of a homework assignment. And Matt had said, is there any, you know, time in the past that there's been a zoning change kind of to a zone that isn't a budding or a split lot? And I actually found this. I was involved in this, it goes back to 2010. And this was an amendment of the zoning map that was done to allow for the construction of the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department facility on North Avenue. The properties that the facility is situated on were all zone general residence. And this was a zoning change that went forward before town meeting. The first part of it was Article 1, which allowed a municipal service provider to be in the business district by special permit. It was not allowed in the general residence district. And number two was amending the zoning map by changing the zoning district designation of property situated on North Ave as Map 11, Passele 85, and assesses Map Number 5, Passels 46A+ and 46B from general residence to business district. This went before town meeting, received a unanimous recommendation from the Planning Board at the time, as you can see. And Jack Washall, Chairman, Wakefield Municipal Gas, motioned the town to vote to amend the zoning bylaws and zoning map change, set forth an Article 2. Was seconded by Terry French, Chairman of the Planning Board, advised that they voted favorable action. I spoke in favor, Michael Pierce, Chairman of the Zoning Board, also spoke in favor. And it was a two-thirds vote, it passed 88 to 1. So this was, Matt, I know you were looking for that, so you gave me a little bit of a homework assignment and I did find that, that this actually has been done in the town before. It benefited a town property and a town use that those properties were zoned from general residence to business.
Is that the only case you could find, Brian?
That's what I found on that, because you would ask me for to find an area where it didn't, you know, no other district touched it and it was kind of on its own and it went to a totally new district.
Yeah, in that case though, it was almost grandfathered use, so you're kind of bringing it into compliance at that point, weren't you?
No, it wasn't because the, the, at that time, the facility was only on Map 11, Passele 85, but the, the light department actually purchased 46A+ and 46B. One of them was actually a residential house that got torn down, which is where the parking facility is for the, for the light department at this point.
If you're not speaking, could you please mute, there's some background noise?
So those were two, those were two properties that were brought in, Matt, for this facility, they, there was a, there was a two-family house where, where the parking lot is as you head down towards Reading on the left-hand side. And that became part of the parking for this facility. So, I mean, I just, you know, I wanted to provide that for you because, you know, I think, you know, part of your concern was that, you know, this might be a first instance and I just wanted to show that it has occurred.
Well, yeah, I mean, I'm not going to go on the whole argument of that, is basically you were taking a grandfathered use and then you changed that and you added a couple parcels to it, it's kind of a different, this is kind of a different situation of picking the, in my opinion, of picking, you know, the most lenient use to fit your, your project and resigning at that, that's, that's all.
Well, what, I mean, what, just so you know, what happened on that project, if you remember, the, the, it really wasn't a grandfathered use because the light department, before they tore down that building and rebuilt, that was only the facility where they stored their equipment and their vehicles. There were no offices that were part of that. So they had no offices there and they moved their offices from Alvin Street to North Ave. So that's why there actually had to be a text change up above that went with this and it said municipal utility service or provider, including related offices, warehouse. So it wasn't a change to a non-conformity, this was a new use that went in there, it was something totally different. There was a certain aspect of it that went, that was, that remained, but a new use was brought in and other properties were added on to it, one, one house that was torn down. So.
Okay.
I mean, I'm not, I'm certainly not looking to argue with it, but it, but it is a circumstance where there was a blanket zoning change from a general residence district to a business district that wasn't a split lot.
Thank you, Attorney McGrath.
And I think, I think, you know, that's what we got, I mean, we really, you know, we really would request your support for this, we really think it's a benefit to the neighborhood. Mr. Tavano is on again. He's a resident, he's a responsible builder. And, you know, as he stated before, he really wants to do something nice here. He doesn't want to turn it into like a contracted type yard. And he's just looking to do what he thinks is a good reasonable use. He has a good track record and I think everybody will be happy with the final result is there. Joe, you want?
Thank you.
Let me see if Joe's on, Joe, do you have anything to add if I may, Mr. Chair? Are you, are you okay, Joe?
Please do.
Joe? He's muted.
He's there, he's on mute.
Joe? You got a mute, Joe?
How's that?
Yeah, that's better, yeah.
Um, you know, nothing's really changed from the previous meetings. I did speak to the neighbors. As you mentioned, there were a lot on Appleton and on Baldwin. And really, no one wants to see more commercial space there. I really wanted to speak to a neighbor directly across the street. Unfortunately, they were a little nervous because of the current situation, but I gave them a letter of what I opposed and I gave them to sign on to this meeting and if they had any concerns, I'm sure they'd be on the meeting now. And I've only received, you know, positive feedback and I know, you know, we have questions about the zoning and, you know, it's, it's not really my realm. I just know that when I'm done there, you may have something that fits and I'm very sure the board will be proud and, you know, everybody will be happy. It's not going to be an issue.
Okay.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, Brian, Attorney McGrath, sorry, if you could, if you could share those with me or actually send them to Paul Reviss.
I can. Yep.
The 2010 letter and the neighbors.
Yes.
Of 102 Salem Street.
Yep, I can do that, Mr. Chair.
Thanks. And you can stop sharing your screen.
Oh, sorry.
Unless, that's right.
Figure out how to do this, hold on.
I know, I don't have host control, obviously, or I couldn't do that, right, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep. So I just want to bring back up the zoning map. I just want it to be clear to everybody, it's currently within the single residence district and the industrial district. That's where it sits now. The change will go to general residence with this zoning bylaw change. And that's really what we're discussing. And as a planning board, I know we, we've discussed at the last couple meetings and there's one topic that did come up. It's why would we have just this general residence sitting with single residence above it and industrial next to it? Why have this one little island? And, and that's was the reason for Attorney McGrath's letter as well, correct? You wanted to show that there was a somewhat precedent set?
Well, I wanted to show, I mean, you know, Matt had, Matt had, yeah, Matt had said, you know, have you ever had a change to a different district, you know, like we.
Right.
A split lot or, or, you know, in, you know, that doesn't involve like directly a but, a different district. And that's why I just presented that, because I was trying to address his.
Right, right. So it, I guess, the board's a little concerned and we can discuss this and Matt and Bill as well. But we're concerned that here's this little island in the zoning map, a dot, that, okay, well, this was done, now it does set a clear precedent that if somebody else wanted to change their property and weren't happy with the zoning they had, that they could go in front of the board, get some letters from the neighbors, yep, this would be better here. Here's a precedent from something close to what can change. And this was approved by town meeting. Here's another little island, so the idea of zoning is not to have these dots of zoning bylaw changes to different zones and little areas, but to really keep it separate, so industrial does a but, single residence in a way that there aren't any in-betweens. I don't want it to be a sticking point on it, but I'd like to hear from the board about comments about how this could set a precedent to other future zoning bylaw amendments that would change, just have little islands, little dots of different zones. Matt, Bill?
I, I think you've, I think I've made my, my feelings clear on this. I'm not really in favor of not extending an existing zone is to start adding these. And I, at some point, I can see them. not extending an existing zone is to start adding these and I, at some point I can see them all over town and I don't think it's, I don't think it's what uniform zoning had, had in mind. So that's, that's basically where I stand on that. I think something like this, what you, what's trying to be done there, I think is, is a great use and it, it would be better suited for the property. But there's always, you can go for variance and put it into, I don't think rezoning it this way is, again, going to be the, the best way in the future that it starts happening all over town. So, my opinion.
Bill, do you have any comments?
Well, I, I think Matt's right. I think it could start a precedence and, and you don't want to have dots all over the place, like you said. And I, I have a reason with them.
All right. And I'm, I'm definitely torn because I feel it will improve and will allow for the owner to do something better than what's there. But if it does change to just a residential, general to resident, single residential, sorry, it's been a long day. Single residence district, it would be part of the north and northeast area zoned above that. Now, Mr. Revis, do you have any comments to add?
Mr. Chairman, this is a difficult issue. There are not any great solutions here. We just have to rely on this developer whose business has been building duplexes and doing a great job of doing that to pursue the project that he wishes to pursue. It's, it's a matter of trust almost about what it would look like. The adjacent property, single residence, this is a, something proposed as less than an industrial use. So as far as being in a butter to that residential property owner, I would think that, that's a good choice for that, for that owner next door, for the butter. It's a difficult site. It's a very difficult site. So I, I would recommend for allowing this owner to proceed with this change.
And I just want to bring up the idea of a variance. If this did stay what it is or did change to single residence district versus general residence, in your experience, Attorney McGrath, going for, in front of the ZBA for variance, is this something that you think would be denied?
Well, unfortunately, we can't because that would be a use variance and Wakefield does not allow use variances. In order to be able to grant use variances, the, the, the town has to have a provision for use variances in their by law, under state law. And Wakefield does not have that provision in their by law. Not many towns do.
Right.
Use variances are really, really strong. I mean, so, you know, a use variance would mean that I could put a gas station in a residential neighborhood if I got a variance from a board. So I kind of don't believe in use variances. I think they potentially can be dangerous in the wrong hands and we don't allow them. So, you know, it was mentioned that we could get a variance to do what we can't. This is a split lot. Single families are not allowed in the industrial district and industrial is not allowed in the single residence district. So we, again, we just thought this was a happy medium. You know, as far as precedent goes, there's no precedent. Every lot stands, every, every zoning change stands on its own. As the town planner said, this is a troubled lot. There's a reason for this owning change. If somebody comes in the middle of my neighborhood and wants to zone industrial, they can't point to this and say, oh, you did it there. There's nothing to do with it. This is, this, this lot stands on its loan, own. It has unique difficulties to it and it needs help. And we're asking for your help and town meetings help to put it to a good viable use for my client, for the neighborhood and for the town. As far as it being a spot, spot zoning really doesn't apply here because a zoning change, you know, I'm reading from the zoning manual. As long as it's in accordance with a well considered plan for the public welfare, a zoning change, you can do whatever you want. And this, I think, is for the public welfare. It's not like you're just trying to give Mr. Tavano something. He could put it to an industrial use. It's probably worth more on that little piece to park commercial vehicles. And, and I don't want Joe to flip this property and say, look, I tried to do it and now I can't do it. So I'm going to send it to somebody that's going to use that. It would be a shame for everybody. So I would, would respectfully ask the board to really dig deep and think about this and, and, and the repercussions in the future. If we don't do the right thing with this lot now and we have the opportunity with the right person that owns it.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you.
Yes. If I may, Brian, could you explore for us? What if a proposal was brought forward under section one ninety thirty two to do garden apartments on this property on the industrial land, which is allowed by special permit by the planning board, right?
Uh, that would be a special permit with the zoning board. Yeah.
And you can push that zoning line thirty feet into the least restrictive zone.
Yeah, good point, Paul.
So wouldn't that, wouldn't that almost take in all of this property?
No, see, so, I mean, this is the difficulty that this lot has because, you know, one of the things that we looked at is trying to push that zoning line. Because Joe's looked at all avenues, but in order to push, what happened to Matt?
I'm switching it back to the actual, where you can see the property.
Oh, thank you. So the problem is, i- i- in order to push that zoning line, Paul, it's, it's a good point. But you need to have the required frontage in the least restrictive district to do that. So.
Really? I'm going to see if I can share.
Where is that in the zoning?
That's under one, that's, um, that's under one ninety dash nine, lots in two districts where a district boundary line divides a lot in single ownership. The regulation for the less restricted portion of the lot shall extend not more than thirty feet into the more restricted portion, provided that the lot has the required frontage on a street in the less restricted district.
Wow. So that last, that last phrase prohibits that?
Yeah, that's right. So that, that's where, you know, we do, we, in, in the industrial district, the, the frontage requirement, Paul, I think is
Well, you're in the single residence district, so you'd have to have a hundred feet.
Yeah, we don't have that. I mean, so it's just like, you know, this is just a, it's a real, you said it earlier, it's a troubled lot.
So you'd have to get a variance from that and then the special permit from?
Yeah, but you can't get a variance from that because you, you know, you can't get a variance to extend the zoning line and I can't get a use variance. So it's.
So there wouldn't be a frontage variance?
Yeah, but I mean, realistically, Paul, I mean, you're not, you know, Joe doesn't want to do a multi-family building there. And what are you going to fit on that industrial portion? You can't park on the, on the single residence portion for the multi-family. Can't do it.
And it wouldn't be a building type that people have seen. I mean, a multi-family would be an unusual building type for that area.
I mean, I don't, I, you know, one of the things that we looked at, we talked about was to rezone it all industrial and try to do a multi-family. And, you know, Joe talked to the neighbors and, and, you know, they really don't want that type of building there. Right, Joe? You there?
Yes, that, that, that actually is correct. When I talked to the neighbor right there to the right and I explained what I was doing, they do not want any, and we talked about, you know, a small four unit builder when I first bought this property. And it would pretty much wipe out the whole lot and I really didn't want, the neighbors didn't really want it. And after I thought about it, I really didn't want to put that kind of property there. That, that, something like that, I don't feel, even though I would probably do better. I think I do better at commercial too. It's not going to fit with the neighborhood. It's, it's nothing you're going to drive by and be proud of. So.
I mean, that would be a mess to put a multi-family building at the end of the, you know, at the end of the industrial district, going into the residential district. That, I just.
I don't know that it would be a great place to live right there.
No.
Next to the Taylor Moving.
I don't think it would be good for the industrial district or that single residence district.
Because I think Taylor Moving has, you know, large trucks. And then across the street is something that has trucks as well.
Well, I, I very much respect, you know, the thoughtfulness of the planning board. You, you guys are always thoughtful, but, you know, one of the, one of the things, Matt, you've always had an open mind, but what you've referred to as troubled lots, you know, you, you know, that was kind of like the Nahad Street lot where we, we get rid of that mess property near the cow wash and, you know, and some of these troubled lots exist in town. We look for ways to put them to a good reasonable use for the owner and for the neighborhood. And I think this creates an opportunity to do that here.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Revis. Thank you, Attorney McGrath. It's good. It's, it's, I know, I really, I, I feel the property could use a, a nice residential piece here and it's, it's the zoning island part. So unless there's any other comments from the planning board, I'd like to hear from the public. Let me pull the participants up if there's any comments from the public. So I don't see any comments from the public. Thank you. And just like past, let me close that, just like past, let me just check the chat. Okay, we're good. Just like in past meetings, it's, any public comments that we have on this is great to help. At this time, I'd like to close the public hearing. Let me stop the share. And share. Just one, okay. Nope. Didn't work. Sorry. Let me try that again. Just the zone. Okay. There we go. Like to close the public hearing on zoning article number twenty three.
So moved.
A motion? I know you're allowing to make a motion to close it.
I moved your motion, so.
Okay.
So Bill can second it if he wants.
Oh, yeah, I'm seconded. I'm sorry.
All right, thanks. And all in favor to close the public hearing for zoning article number twenty three?
Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to continue this to our next meeting so we can think about this some more. Brian didn't, didn't give me a little bit to think about and I want to take that in consideration and hold off making a motion to favor, recommend or not recommend to our next meeting.
Thank you. That's fair enough. I feel the same way. I'm, I, I, I'm really starting to picture what could be there and the general residence is a, is looking better. So I'd like to also, and, and Mr. Revis, if we could have this on the next planning board meeting agenda?
I wonder if I could make one comment that might give you something else to think about. That's appropriate. If it's zoned for general residence, the owner could build a single family home there or a structure that looked like a single family home. Just like the one that's to the north of the property, to the right. And he, and he could do a granny flat or he could do a, an addition that, that is a second unit, effectively being a duplex and, and accomplishing what he wishes. And it would look like the other properties that are in that subdivision. The only difficulty is that, you know, he's right there next to the industrial zone, right next to the, the entrance to Taylor Moving, where there will be big trucks coming in and out. So he'll have a lot of the impact there. By doing the duplex zoning, you do give him the opportunity to, to build a single family home that's a likely abutters and it also could be, you know, have a secondary unit. It doesn't have to be the, the type of townhouse duplexes that we've normally seen around town. It could be something, a kind of a hybrid. So the owner may be used, interested in that. And that may give you some comfort by zoning it to general residence because it does give him that option.
I'm sorry, zoning it to single residence or general?
General.
Okay.
He can, he can build a single residence building in a general residence zone. He could build a, a single family home looking building that is actually a duplex in the general residence zone.
Understood. Sorry, Mr. Revis, Paul, I thought you were going in the direction where if it was changed to single residence.
No.
Okay.
I'm, I'm taking you in the direction of general residence.
Okay.
As he wishes to do. I'm just telling you that general residence allows you to build a single residence style building in there or a single residence building.
Understood. All right, thanks. If we could have that on the agenda for the May twelfth meeting, I believe is our next. Yep. The Tuesday after Mother's Day. Don't forget. May twelfth.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say on behalf of my client, thank you to the board for really taking your time with this, where, you know, to, to, to put four hearings into this and your time and, and the thoughtfulness is appreciated no matter which way it goes. So thank you.
You're welcome. We do want to get it right.
Appreciate the consideration very much.
Okay. Good. All right, thank you. I'm going to share the agenda. So we've done Lovis, North Ave is left. Item number three on tonight's agenda, public hearing zoning map change. Three parcels of land west side of North Ave between five ninety two and five seven zero North Avenue from single residence to general residence. Zoning article number twenty two, to see if the town will vote to amend the zoning bylaws of the town of Wakefield by amending the Wakefield zoning map dated May second, twenty sixteen by changing the zoning district designation of three parcels of land on the west side of North Avenue between five ninety two and five seven zero North Avenue shown on the Wakefield accessors map as parcel four seven B on map two A, parcel two plus on map two A and parcel forty seven L on map two A, currently within a single residence district to a general residence district as shown on the map below. And amending the zoning map such that the revised map bears a new date, May fifth, twenty twenty, and amending the zoning text one ninety dash seven zoning map such that the text is changed with the revised map date. The first sentence of one ninety dash seven dot A is replaced with the following. A, except as set forth below, the above zoning districts are shown on the map entitled Wakefield zoning map dated June eighth, two thousand twenty, or see what the town will do about it. So this is our second meeting, correct, for this one? And we are looking at a lot. So this is one twenty eight. Just to, let's see, one twenty eight runs here. We have Subaru of Wakefield. I'm sorry, we have all the property businesses, Subaru of Wakefield, Volvo and the new two buildings, one that's completed, one under construction that are apartment buildings. The area that we're looking at is this hatched area with frontage along North Ave next to the Knights of Columbus. So this larger parking lot here is the Knights of Columbus. And this hatched area with the Xs through it is the area that we're looking at rezoning, which is a butts to the back of the railroad tracks, the commuter line there. So we had some good discussions last week about this. There was a lot of discussions, understanding what the property is, what it can be. We talked about the river. The marsh, the opportunity of the land being given back. We talked about how the property could be used in a couple of different ways. And I know once we got to a point where we're discussing it, we're trying to figure out, let's see. I'm going to jump back to. Not New Salem Street. We'll go back to Google. And jump over. And you could see in this map, it shows Juliana Salon, the building that is operational exists along North Ave. Note, there's no sidewalk there and it's a one-way coming in, looping around and coming back out. The pad for the site is here. This is maybe 80 or 90% complete now. And the property we're looking at right here, there's a brook, a stream, a river, however it wants to be designated from this marsh. Going by it yesterday morning, the DPW was cleaning out the culvert and it was probably about 15 or 18 feet wide. Going into it. And then here's the stretch of land with the trees to the property of the Knights of Columbus. And you can see the Knights of Columbus. Which we discussed last week, the parking lot goes back, which could also somehow give access to the back of this land if needed. There's my street view. Here we go. The side. There's the building under construction. That's a lot further along now, the existing height. So there's the three stories. This one is a little bit taller. It looks like four stories. Here's a look to where I think there was a. Matt, wasn't that giving me an autumn look? Or was that the other software? That could go to autumn?
I think that was Bing Maps.
Right. Sorry for not having this one up. I thought I did. Wow. Where did I go? There we go. This one actually has, the house is still there. Matt, do you know where I can find that?
No, I mean, I'm looking online too. I don't.
Yeah. Let me do the aerial first. Maybe that helps. Maybe that's the difference. I still don't have those controls. That were right here to show without the trees. All right. Well, I'm not going to waste any time on that. That was a lot of the discussion that we had. Attorney McGrail, would you like to add anything in that I might have missed?
No. Well, yeah, I always do. You know, that myself. So I, I think that that's a good recap. Dana Lopez is, is on the Zoom meeting. He's one of the owners of the property. Dana has told you what his intent is with the property that he'd like to have three duplexes with a common driveway similar to the theme that was done at the Oxbow Pet Shop. You know, we're, you only have one driveway coming out. We think this is a good buffer between the business district going into the single, which then becomes general. Within that single residence district, there's, there's a number of multifamily houses anyways. We believe that, and I think the abutter across the street talked about this, who was at the last meeting. Who did not oppose this use. He was definitely opposed. As he said, the neighborhood would have been to a, another multifamily building. But he discussed and we discussed how we think that this will provide a natural traffic calming measure from that long stretch of area where cars just to pick up, tend to pick up speed after they go past my office park. And then they go flying by the Knights of Columbus during the day because we always know the speed drops at the Knights of Columbus. So we, we think this is a good use. I, I think the board, my take was, and I certainly can't speak for the board, but I, I think everybody kind of thought it was a good use. I think Matt has some concerns i- in their valid that, hey, you know, we changed the zoning and, you know, you're talking about a common driveway. What if somebody, you know, you sell it or you change your mind. Once we change the zoning. You know, we have no guarantees on this. And I certainly respect that. But I will say to have three driveways serving six properties coming out is going to be very difficult. And it's not, it's not the best way to develop it. I know Dana and his partner Ray, who I've known for quite a while, have represented them before. They want to do this. They're committed to it. And I think even if they did sell it or lose it for some reason, somebody else is going to come to the same conclusion that this is the best use. If I can, can I share, Mr. Chair, just to?
Yeah. Let me stop sharing. You're welcome to share.
Yeah, because this might give an idea. Let me just see if I can find this. Yeah, this. Let me see. Dana, are you there?
I am. I am.
Great. So this is, this is kind of a, just a little sketch that Dana had of, had done by Hayes Engineering, kind of conceptually of how this might be able to work. You know, would be really just a kind of a nub common driveway that would provide access to all of these that would then come out one in one area on North Ave. So I just kind of want to give, you know, they have put some thought into this. Hayes did this, this type, this concept would work with the wetlands that are there. As you can see, Hayes designated the 25 foot buffer that's required by the Conservation Commission. And this would, this, you know, after the zoning changes, this would need a bunch of relief from conservation, from yard board. And also from the Board of Appeals. So it would need, it would end up being back before kind of everybody because we have to figure out the, you know, the waiver that you would normally do on the frontage requirements. And how we would work that out. So I just kind of want to give you an idea of, you know, and to Dana's credit, this plan that I'm showing you, this wasn't done yesterday or, you know, last week. This was done prior to them buying the property. So this is what they were thinking about before they even acquired it, that, you know, this might be able to be something viable that they could do. So Dana, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, this is, this was one of the concepts. I actually talked to John over at Hayes. And another idea was to do a loop, one loop coming in and going out so that the buildings would be, the two endwards would be in a similar position and the, the, the back one would be more towards the center. This was an etched in stone. So he had another concept we really didn't draw out yet, but we could certainly present that one as well.
Yeah. And if the board would like to see that, you know, this is only the second meeting. So if you'd like to see that in next meeting, we could, that's something we could do right there. And maybe a couple of different concepts.
Absolutely. And that's, and by centering the back property, that might alleviate the frontage, the frontage issue. Because we need 80 foot frontage in general residence, I believe. Correct?
Yeah, you're going to need a, you'd need a variance on this and you'd need a waiver from the planning board. So like I said, you know, to do this concept. I think, I, 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 you know, I don't know how that's going to work out. We'd have to look at that. And maybe we should vet that a little bit more with John. That we can present it to the board at their next meeting. So we kind of have a full understanding of that.
Okay.
Brian, I have a question. Can, can these variances be granted with the, the zone it's in right now?
No, again, Matt, because you can't do the two family, you could do that with single families, but not two families. Because, you know, it's only zoned single family residence. So if it be a use variance, allowing a two family or only a three, one family is allowed.
This is good. And I, I'd like to, I'm not sure if you put the, if you want to put the effort in to look at different layouts and master plans for the site, that's fine. But I'm not sure that's appropriate for us as a board to look at plans that might be to help make a decision. I think it's good to see them, but
It's up to you.
I'm more interested in, personally, I'm more interested in understanding just the concept of three dwellings with one shared driveway going in and that 25 foot abutter. This, this plan is good enough for me because any other plan is still just hypothetical until you break ground and get something approved. Or, yeah.
True. But I mean, I can tell you this, that if this zoning change happens, you know, I mean, Dana, you're going to move, you want to move quick on this, right?
Very quickly, yes.
Yeah. So it's not a waste of our time because it's something that, I mean, I think it just gives your board, you know, an idea of, you know, what you're possibly creating with the zoning change. But it's up to you if you want to see it or not.
I know. I just would hate to see you put a lot of time and money into something that really doesn't need to be presented to me. Or I can't speak for the rest of the board, but this is good enough for me to get understanding what your intentions are.
Okay.
Yep.
I mean, I think, other board members?
I mean, yeah, this, this says what, what you believe the plans are going to be, but there's no guarantees that this is going to happen. And that's, that's where I'm at on this. So you know, if the market does change, which, which it could, the, and someone else picks this up. They're going to do what is, is cheapest and easiest and that won't be going for variances. It's going to be putting in what they can do by right. So that's what I'm concerned about.
I understand.
I mean, you talk about making this a natural buffer. I, I don't see how adding more density turns it into a buffer, but you know, you can make that argument, but I'm, I'm not really buying that. So.
Yeah, I mean, probably buffer is the wrong word. I, I think, you know, it's more traffic calming. That, you know, whenever you have long stretches, I, I did a development on Pinto Road right on the Stone and Woben line years ago. And it was similar to this. It was a stretch of woods. You know, with, with development on each side and, and the people, when the people actually supported it, like the gentleman across the street because once it got developed, it just slowed the traffic down. Because it just got rid of that long stretch of like vacant area.
Honestly, I'm not sure.
Probably more of a traffic calming.
Yeah. I'm not sure that's a strong selling point on the property and the zoning bylaw change. To me, what is a strong point for this is that it could extend the sidewalk down in a crossing or something that allows people to actually walk in this area. Because right now there's no sidewalk. That whole length from Juliana Salon or from the auto dealerships past the Knights of Columbus until you get down to what's this, not all the way down to Win, is it? Well, I can't remember the name of it without looking. Walcott.
Well, let me stop sharing so you can.
Yeah, I know. I'm just looking Walcott. There's still, is not a sidewalk, but there's grass to walk on. Willow, there's nothing. There really isn't a sidewalk all the way down until you get even past Win Street. And one is the one that has the crossover bridge to Elm, the path. Which has the crosswalk. So if you can stop sharing.
I did.
Oh, you did? Oh, thanks. Hey, look at that.
Yeah. And, you know, I agree that this is a better use of the property. I'm just again stuck up on, held up on what, what could happen if if conditions change. And that's, that's what I'm worried about is we can end up having three houses there. Potentially get three driveways, no sidewalk, and we've made a bad situation even worse. And that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah. And what I'm going to do, what I'm going to do prior to the next meeting, I'm going to, I'm going to talk, if I, if, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair, the town council to see what we might be able to do to address that in some form or fashion.
Address the walkability?
Well, address Matt's concern. You know, and I mean, are you saying, Mr. Chairman, that you, you want a commitment on sidewalks? Is that what you're, is that what you're? I mean, I understand Matt's, I totally understand Matt's concern. I, I just want to fully understand yours or your, or your point.
Well, yes, my concern is about walkability. I don't want people to live here. And then when they walk out of their house, they have no sidewalk in either direction and no way to cross over and they're just running across North Ave. There's nothing to walk down by the Knights of Columbus. There's grass here on the side that you walk on and there's a little bit of a dirt path in between utility poles. Not until you get down to Win, does it have a cross, a crossing. And you could see Win Street, just, I don't want to go too big into this. This is my big deal about making Wakefield more walkable. But you can see from a pattern from Elm Street, walking here across the footbridge, it's a pedestrian bridge, people have access to the lake and the park. Crossing this crosswalk. It's the only crosswalk from the North Ave lights all the way up to the set of lights here at the dealership. Crosswalks. It would be wonderful somehow. And I know we've been told that when this property is done, there'll be sidewalks by the DPW, but I'm not sure about that.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I thought the sidewalk was going to be done by the developer.
Of these two properties?
Yes.
Yes.
We don't have a solid, we don't have a solid answer on that, right?
The ZBA was going to enforce that.
No. No.
All right. I know it's, it's more of a tangent, but I, I'm going to find out what about those sidewalks. I'll put it on my list.
Yeah. And I was going to try to do the same thing.
If you could, and we can compare notes.
Yeah.
Well, I think that that needs to be addressed by the ZBA as well.
Yep. So Matt, go ahead. Your turn.
I don't know that it's the condition in their decision.
Well, you know, it'll probably, we're probably showing their site plan, Paul.
Yeah. I looked through the notes of the ZBA meeting when this happened and I couldn't find anything about requiring sidewalks.
Probably be on there.
In a meeting about two and a half months, three months ago, I was in a meeting and DP, one of the DPW representatives was there and he said, yes, there will be sidewalks along there when that property is completed. You know, I don't want this to become something about the sidewalk and the other properties. I, I do want the people who do live there to have a, a way to walk to the lake in downtown and to the farmer's market and to Juliana Salon.
We wouldn't have issues adding the sidewalks. We've done it. The last two properties have developed and revealed. We've been apartment buildings in, we were, you know, part of the condition of the permit was to add the sidewalks. And you typically can't get occupancy permit until you meet the requirements of the permit. So I got to believe the two buildings didn't have that as part of their permit requirement. Well, they would have, would have certainly had it on the first building before they get occupancy. So.
Right.
But we wouldn't have a problem adding them to the front of the property at all.
Yeah, I doubt that. I doubt, I mean, Matt talked about this. Yeah, I doubt that. I doubt, I mean, Matt talked about this. I can't see sidewalks going into that building now. That makes no sense. They'd have to take out the granite curbing, put in the handicap ramps, right, Matt? I mean, that.
Yeah, they, they gotta rip the paper and everything, so.
Utility poles need to move possibly here.
Yeah, I don't know the vibe, I, you know, I mean, Dana's, you know, there's two things. I mean, Dana's happy to do it. But. There's two issues with that. I don't know if it can be done. Because I think. My experience with this is, is certain requirements on main drags where sidewalks are gonna go, they have to have connectivity. And they have to have a place where you can cross to get to the other side with a crosswalk. There's like state guidelines on that. Number one. And number two, as Matt has, has brought up, uh, you know, I just don't know how we tie that in to a zoning change.
And, you know, I don't want this to. And I don't want this zoning change to be about the sidewalk. I don't think it should be part of it. I think that's something we should look at separately, and then when the, when. And if the bylaw is changed. And this property comes up in front of the planning board, we can discuss it then.
Okay. Well, I think, you know, what, what I'd like a little time to do until the next meeting is, is to, is I'd like to talk to Tom Mullen. I'd like to, you know, see what. What we can brainstorm as far as being able to couple something that gives the board some comfort. And. Some authority on, you know, to kind of hold us to what we're talking about, what we want to do with the property.
Okay.
But, you know, I gotta do a little homework on that. I mean, I, you know, I hear the concern. It's a valid concern, and we just have to figure out how to, how to try to deal with that.
Okay. Brian, is there such thing as a conditional zoning change or not really?
Yeah, there's something called contract zoning that I want to look into a little bit, Matt. And, you know, and that's what I want to talk, I want to look at that and talk to Tom about it.
You know, I, this came up before with me in my professional career as an architect. It was. It was just outside of Chicago, and they were looking at changing design with a, like a special condition. And they ended up just, it's general residence, and they added a different zoning, like general residence. A or B versus just general residence, and they had a special condition. Because there were more areas they were looking at in that city. That were in need of a zoning change because of what was being built. But tha, that's the only time I've seen professionally a conditional or a contract, a conditional zoning change. They added a new zoning. They added a new zone to do that.
Yeah, I mean, it, I gotta look into that because, um, you know, this would be, if it could be done with something to the extent that. You know, it's zone general residence, rezone general residence. And then there's an agreement as part of that, that if it's gonna be developed into two-family houses, that there would only be one curb cut. So then if it was developed, you could still do single-family homes in the, in the general residence district, but that wouldn't be applicable to that. So. Because what I would want to do is to just contract it and say, we're going to put two families. And it has to be one curb cut, because if we, if we can't get the variances, or they get appealed or something like that. We would need an escape hatch that we could say, okay, well, we can still do single families, and it's not subject to that condition.
Right, understood.
So, um, so I wanna, I wanna vet that a little bit and, and talk to town council about it.
Yeah, and, I mean, the zoning districts that we have. I mean, they're pretty well set and defined. Okay. Any other comments from the planning board, from the board? Before we open up to the public? Mr. Reviss? You're still on mute? Do you have any comments?
No comment now.
All right, thanks. Any comments from the public? No hands raised. So why don't we continue this and. Do some homework and on our, have this on the agenda for the May 12th meeting as well. And it would be great to close this out on the May 12th meeting.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Yeah, I agree. Keep the public. Participation, public hearing open and just. Move this to our next meeting.
Yes. Let's see. Wow, did we cover them all? We did. Let's see, other business, definitive plans, endorsement, Wildwood Street, that's Seven Glendale, continued. Any topics or anything on that, Attorney McGrath?
No, I mean, that's, I got some things I gotta do on that, and then, um, so no.
Anything you need from us?
Not right now, but I, just, Paul, please keep it on, on the agenda for the 12th in case I have something, if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
I will.
Okay.
I mean, really, what that is, is, is we've got a kind of, one of the, some conditions prior to the endorsement. So. I've gotta, I've gotta work with Paul on those.
Okay. Item number eight, topics not anticipated by the chair. Town planner, do you have any?
Yes.
Mr. Reviss, do you have any?
Hi, we've received two A and R plans that will be on your next agenda possibly. I've referred both to Mr. Lowery to give a preliminary review. One is. Problematic because it has a roadway. That has been built. I'm not sure that I know the condition of the road or, or the status of it. I've referred that to. Bill Renaud last Thursday. By email and asked for a recommendation on the roadway and his review of that. Haven't heard back. I think both of these A and Rs are gonna be necessarily on the next agenda. I. Anticipate that they will take a great deal of time to review. And. They are not complete, is in my view, right now.
Okay.
They'll have to be amended and become. Some resubmitted with. Building drawn on one, and I don't know that the, the other one is, is. Has any particular issues, but I know that one of them has a great many issues, especially with the condition of the, the road that was built.
Okay. And.
I don't know, I don't know if you can get back to me on that, Matt, so I can get that email off and try to get those plans revised.
Yeah, I, I've taken a look at them quickly. The, the one you're talking about with the roadway issue, we've already done an A and R on that, so. We're, we've already, we've already looked at that. And basically, we've already accepted the information they provided on the roadway, so I don't think there's much we can do on that. And if Bill does come back, Bill Renaud does come back with, with some. Suggested changes which are verification, which I think he will. It's gonna pose an issue because we've already basically. Signed off on this, so it's, it's just a further A and R of a block we've already A and R, so. That's.
There is a, there, one house has been built, and it's not drawn on the plan. So there, there is an issue there with the completeness of that plan.
Oh, they did build a house up there? I, I haven't noticed that, so. I'll, I'll take a walk up there and take a look at it, so.
And I, and I drove by, I couldn't recognize the road. It looked like actually a driveway because it had pylons on each side of the road. So I, I just rather than I put it on the agenda and have a debate. Yes, it is right. No, it's not right. Yes, it is right. No, it's not right. I mean, that's not a productive meeting. But I anticipate that's, that's how the discussion will go on this. Unless we get this, uh, plan revised before the meeting. Either the board will have to be prepared to deny it and write an extensive letter about why it was denied.
Okay. Like.
Plus the fact that they, they kind of put it at the last moment, so, I mean. It happens all the time, but, uh, the agenda was already written before we got the plans, so.
I don't feel like we're discussing the issue directly. I think we're talking about how to schedule this.
Correct.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. It's good. Um, I do like our proactive way of looking at plans and reviewing them before we do bring them in front of a meeting. That, that has helped a lot with the. With the required information on a plan, so if that does happen, I'm looking forward to seeing the plans before the next meeting. Any topics not anticipated from the planning board members?
Just, uh, cleanup issues. We need to. Deal with these, uh. Past meeting minute notes, approvals. Just so we don't go on too long and forget what's going on with this. I know we have a couple. Paper notes that we can vote on. I, I don't think we've received one of them. I'm not sure. And then the, we've got last week's. Recorded meeting. I don't know. Again, are we supposed to have some paper notes? We had some discussions last week about that. Let's just try to get that straightened out before we. Get too far down the road.
Okay, I have that on my list of to-do.
The other thing is. We did have one member resign, so. What would be the process for. Trying to get a replacement in? What's the timeframe for that? Is, do we have one nowadays? I know everything's different, so.
I haven't seen any timeframe. I know. Someone, we can. We can suggest. People to be appointed. Are by. Town council. I believe that's the process. And that person would fill out Mr. Semenza's term. And we know we also, as a five-member board, we have one member who hasn't participated in a meeting in 13 months now.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm about ready to nominate Joanne because she attends our meetings and pays attention, so. Don't hang around too long.
I still have a lot to learn, I feel like.
Oh, we all do. And Joanne, I, I do have a, not to go in a different direction with Matt's comment, but. I, I do want to ask you, do you feel the virtual meetings would have you attend more meetings if they were virtual versus at town hall?
I think either is fine.
Okay. All right, thanks for your input. My hope is once, um, we do get back to town hall, that we still have a virtual meeting where people can attend and see what's going on as well.
I think it does encourage greater participation to have that option.
Yes, thank you. I'd love for that to happen. Matt, to your point. I will, actually, Mr. Reviss. If you could correct me, is the process that we can recommend people and then town council will choose. A person to replace Mr. Semenza for his term?
Yes, you would need to have a joint meeting with town council, and they have seven votes. You have five votes. And you have to vote the person in the office.
Okay.
And they would serve up Mr. Semenza's term until the next election.
Matt, do you have anybody in mind that you would recommend?
Uh, not at this point, but I, I am working on someone, so we'll see how that goes.
Okay. Bill, do you have anybody that you could recommend?
Uh, no, not right now, but I can. Around.
Mr. Reviss, do you have any?
Everyone I've contacted have declined.
Yeah, well, Sarah was the one that we were hoping.
Right.
Could adjust. Um, I have two. I have Josh Lannan. Who is, um, worked for Bond Brothers as their, um, safety officer. And now works for a software company. And. He would be a, he's, he's a CM, everything, so he would be a good person to have. I've been working on him. The last time he said, let's talk, so that's making progress. Amy Applebaum is a civil tech engineer, environmental engineer, and she is pretty high up in her company. And I know with some young kids and with everything she's doing, it's not the right time, but she's one that would be interested, so just have to find the right time for her. Please reach out. I'm, I'm so concerned that, um, like if Bill's couldn't, if Bill's daughter wasn't there to help him tonight, we wouldn't have had a meeting. We wouldn't have had a quorum. Or if one of us, um, just has some, a conflict. We weren't even supposed to meet tonight because I had a business trip out to, um, San Francisco. I should have been out there right now in a conference, so. I don't know. I'm, I'm concerned about the three-member out of five-member board thing.
So you do realize that I'm feeding away here?
Um, no, I'm in denial.
I, I will be gone by June 30th.
Okay, and I appreciate. All the work you do. Do you know, Paul, if the town has looked at your. Pre, uh, your successor, successor?
No.
They're not in the process of?
I don't know what they're proposing to do here.
Sorry for laughing. Okay.
I think they're gonna shift and, uh, try to hire an economic development director and. And I don't know what will happen with the planning board meetings.
Okay.
You may be on your own.
That would be interesting.
Many boards are on their own, you know, historical commission.
Right, but do they have a clerk that takes care of a lot of the work?
Pardon?
Do they have a clerk who takes the notes and takes care of agendas and other things?
No, I think that's all done by the board.
Okay.
And I, and I don't know that, you know, Linda is prepared to take on doing the agendas. And doing, doing legal ads and. Receiving applications.
Wow.
I don't know how any of that's gonna be handled, and there's not. There's not a conversation ongoing about that. There is a conversation ongoing about hiring an economic development director. I, I don't know that you're gonna find one that would.
Do you think it's worth me setting up a meeting to speak with, uh, Mr. Mayo?
I think so. It's okay.
I can just find out what he's thinking. Okay.
So do you need two more members or just one?
We need one more right now, um, immediate, but we'd like, um, another one as, see. I'm not sure, Joanne, if you know, we're elected and it's a five-year term. So this has happened in the past. Someone is active for the first two years, three years, and then they fall off. And something comes up, they start a business, they're not interested anymore. Not that it's a pattern, but. This is the second time I've seen it, and I haven't been on the board that long.
Right. So how many, how, how much time is left on the opening?
Not sure. We need to find that out, like, meaning.
If you were appointed to that position for Mr. Semenza's spot. His term would have, I think, lapsed in April of, uh. 2021.
21, okay.
So it would only be for 10 months, I would say, or eight months.
Yeah, I do have the, the town.
You'd have to run for election if you wish to stay in that position.
For the five-year term.
Or, you know, a brand-new five-year term.
I think that scares a lot of people away.
Yeah. Yeah, five years is pretty long, I mean.
Well, you don't have to serve the whole five years, but most people feel obligated once they've been elected. And the, the five-year term is in state statute, so we can't vary it, can't rewrite our own. And the, the five-year term is in state statute, so we can't vary it, uh, can't rewrite our own, write our own rules.
Okay.
Well, I think that's it for topics this evening. Um, I have some homework assignments. Um, and Paul, thanks for bringing up the A and R plan and your June 30th date is, do you know if there's any, um, party?
No party.
A Zoom, a Zoom, are people going to drive their cars and beep their horns out your window?
I, I hope not. I hope not.
Yeah.
I'm a very, I'm a very low-key guy, you know, I'd rather just sort of fade away.
Understood. You know, I don't want to bring this up now, um, but you're open to be able to run for the planning board. As a Wakefield residents, resident.
Not a chance.
Have to ask. I know I asked at a previous meeting, but I thought I'd ask again. All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I'll look at your motion and, uh, Bill seconds it and, uh, I'll vote for it.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Matt. Thanks, everyone. Thank you, Joanne.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.
Good night.
Good night, everyone.
Night.